I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation as is written in the agenda? Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam, Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Dave's not here. Steve Ledoux Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stullen Needham, yes?
Host Joakim Stoyas?
Okay. Ed, has there been any public comments submitted for tonight's meeting?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's move on to for good of the organization. I have just a couple of things. One, I want to thank everyone at Minute Man for what I heard was a really moving graduation ceremony last Friday. You know, I was out of town, so I was sorry that I wasn't there, but I heard that it was a wonderful event. So, thank you and congratulations to everyone who was involved. I also want to just call attention to George's description of the senior gala that was in the packet. I really enjoyed reading that. And again, thank you to your team, to everyone who helped put on a wonderful event. Um, I do want to just remind the committee of upcoming meetings. We have a school committee, yes, Jeff?
Yes, I just want to mention, I think this is correct. My daughter works at, in marketing at Olin College. And she noticed that one of the Minute Man graduates is going to Olin College. Pretty amazing. And she just pointed that out to me. So I just wanted to bring it out that that was noticed.
Yeah. Oh, that's.
Jeff, you've been holding out on us. We would like an articulation agreement with Olin College, please. We're starting a new early college program, which Anthony will tell you about at some point. But yeah, we need to get in there, Jeff.
You send me something, I'll pass it on. And she has as much authority as a paper clip over there, but you never can tell if the right person hears about it.
Well, sometimes the right clip is on the right pieces of paper.
If you would send it to me, this is Ford. I know the dean of students over there.
That's higher up?
No, I'll send it to both of you.
Okay, there we go. So, so Jennifer?
So I'm not really sure if this is for the good of the organization, but things have been a little tense in Lancaster. So I have requested to be reappointed and they did that last night. So I just, I've been working to try to find somebody and it's just the atmosphere right now is not conducive, so.
It's bound to somebody great. What are you talking about? It was complete success.
Best news we've had today.
Yeah, yes.
So I am, I am at least committed for the time being.
Well, well, we are very, very happy to hear that, Jennifer. I know you were maybe hoping to move on, but we are thrilled that.
I wanted to make sure it was somebody that was going to be positive and productive in the committee. And I just, like, things are a little stressful right now in town, so I didn't, I didn't find anybody.
Well, well, as I said, it's to our benefit. We're thrilled that you will be staying with us for another term.
Thank you.
Alice?
I attended the VTA Advisory Council as a member of the audience yesterday and listened to the entire meeting and shared sort of play by play what happened there with that.
Well, thank you, Alice, for, for doing that and for staying through the whole meeting. Anything else for the good of the organization? I do want to remind people of upcoming meetings. Our next school committee meeting is June 29th. Also, if you please respond to Julia about setting a, our July meeting. And just as a reminder, and for those who may be new to the school committee, our July meeting is our reorganization meeting and it's when we elect new officers for the school committee. So please be thinking about whether you are willing to step up and to one of the officer roles. Okay, anything else? If not, let's move on to superintendent's report.
Committee report in athletic fields, Ford?
Yep, the school building project. The team is working on building, accumulating the as-built and other closeout documents for the MSBA and the town of Lincoln. And our big priority is waiting for the grass seed to germinate. So we're working on that project, athletic fields. The scheduled completion dates, which we're on target for right now, is the baseball field to be completed August 23rd. Football and track, September 13th, and softball field area, September 27th. Continuing working mainly on the baseball, football and track area, really consisting of drainage and foundations. Lights are being installed and the footings being poured throughout, electric conduits being installed. And they're finishing screening the loom and that's where they are as a few hours ago.
Any questions for Ford? Jeff?
Ford, how long does it take for the artificial turf to grow?
Takes a long time. That's why you have about three feet of rock, stones and all that for drainage. So the grass grows very well with that. I'm talking about the turf grass.
Right. Okay, any other questions for Ford? Okay, then let's move on to state admissions update.
Well, Alice can help me here because she was in that meeting yesterday. So next month, the Board of Education is going to vote on these new regulations, which I think I all sent you a copy of the letter that I signed on to with Mava around some suggestions for revisions in the language. I'm not really sure how those are going to be incorporated or if any of them will be, but it, I think it's safe to describe it and Alice can chime in as a bureaucratic mire of confusion, which really, I think its intent is to shift the responsibility, the liability of admissions from the state to the local districts. All in all, I don't think it's going to make a lot of difference to Minute Man. However, it's going to make a lot of difference in terms of how different schools approach admissions. And you know, from my long-term perspective in this role, I've always hoped that the admissions process would become more streamlined, more consistent across the whole state. And I think what I see now, the opposite of that is going to be happening.
Yeah, I think that's right. And it's, I would say there was a very strong lack of clarity yesterday to me. I had several questions that remain unclear. The answers wouldn't work clear. And it seems to me as if there are going to be a lot of people testing the waters, as Ed said differently, in every district. And it's going to be very confusing unless they make some very strong effort to, I guess the word streamline is correct, or streamline their policy and just get it aligned because it isn't, it isn't aligned. And so there are going to be confusion everywhere.
So that's not a very fun update. Not really giving anyone any clarity, but that's the update. Welcome to DESI 2.1.
Can you just give us maybe a sense of timeline, next steps? I think the public comment period's still going on, right?
Yeah, they, they were going to vote at the Board of Ed this month, which is the next Board of Ed meeting, they were going to vote.
A week's.
Yeah. I have to find my, I'm trying to find my note so I can give you a better example of this sort of thing.
Well, what I heard today in a Mava meeting this afternoon was that the, you may recall that in the guidelines, there's a August 15th deadline where we have to submit our admissions policy to the Department of Ed. There's some confusion, I guess is the word, about whether or not they'll be able to invoke that requirement this August. And all we would be doing was be submitting what we're, what we're doing with some modifications that we've talked about in the Communications, Admissions and Access Subcommittee. So it doesn't make a lot of difference to us right now.
I guess the biggest surprise was that they're not going to approve the admissions policies anymore. You know how you submit the admissions policy and then there's a big rigmarole of getting it approved? Their plan is not to do that anymore. And they have, they're going to have, they won't prescribe the admissions criteria, but they have prohibitions against certain things, as you've seen. And then they have this two-pronged test for selection criteria. And there are monitoring data analysis and stakeholder inquiries that can be used to determine if the selected criteria are having the desired impact. And then there is a, there's only one minimum criterion, which is that the student must have been promoted for, to the next grade, the grade that they're seeking to enter. And there's others, you know, selective, other selective ways that the district might choose. Each district choosing their own, I guess, are only allowable if more students apply than the number of seats, which you saw before. So all of those things together, if you really like, try to do a little flow chart of them. To me, there is a conflict, but I haven't really, I don't see any answers coming.
Any other questions about that? Annual town meeting, we've had six successful budget votes. We have three town meetings left. I believe one is this Sunday, Steve in Concord.
That's right, but it's on the consent agenda, so hopefully we'll have to worry. And the moderator is going to require 10 people to hold any item on the consent. So odds are we're in good shape.
Great. And in a couple of Mondays, there's Lancaster and Acton. I'm working with the folks in Acton around revising our recorded presentation. And then they have a hybrid model of town meeting and, you know, we'll be there. So we have a budget though, that's the good news. We have an FY22 budget, which is a great thing. Mava update, the only Mava update I have is, you may recognize this name, but the new executive director of Mava is Steve Sherrick. I think I've described some of my concerns with Mava and with Steve's appointment. And I was on the interview committee. There were nine of us and today we had the board of directors meet. We had a quorum of 23 and they voted to approve Steve as the new executive director. I'm, I'm much more optimistic than I was yesterday about Mava coming back to its rightful place of setting the narrative for high-quality career and technical education, having a role in policy advocacy and development and being respected when it comes to some of the things that the Department of Education is doing. This coupled with the opportunity that's in some of the legislation out there for this session, which includes, I can't remember the House or the Senate bill, but it includes the re-establishment of a commissioner of occupational education, which we had many years ago. And I think there's a real opportunity for high-quality CTE to kind of take its place again because we've lost it and the narrative has been taken away from us. But it's a really good, it's a good turn of events. Any questions on that? Jeff? You're muted.
Just please pass our regards and congratulations on to Steve.
I will do that.
At least we know their communications ability is going to go.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's a little bit different. He's not cut from the same cloth as a lot of superintendents are and, and I think it's great. Special Ed Department update from Amy. Is Amy on? Where are you? Well, there you are. Can you share your screen?
I can, or at least I can try.
So just to, there was a request to have a broad-based kind of overview of special ed from Amy, who is our assistant superintendent and oversees special ed.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect, all right. So this is our, our trends over the last several years. I think everyone knows we hover right around 50% and that's been very consistent, regardless of our enrollment fluctuating, going up and down. Our sped population stays very consistent. And that's trending for the incoming freshman class next year as well. We're right around 45%, but all of our transition meetings aren't done yet. So they tend to kind of trickle in over the summer too. So we're going to be in the mid 40s at least. This is our breakdown of our disability types, different than your typical high school, which usually has a higher level of specific learning disabilities. That's actually one of our lower occurrences. Our biggest one is health and that's for, primarily for ADHD for students. And coming up quickly is emotional disability. We are seeing, well, we've seen a steady increase. And as you can imagine, over the past year, it's, it's gone up. Minute Man typically has about maybe 20 students hospitalized a year. And that for the last, you know, I'd say three or four years, that's been around 20, give or take, pretty consistently. This year we've had 37. So we've almost doubled. So our emotional needs of our students are continuing to increase. I know that this year is sort of an anomaly with the pandemic and all, but it fits our trends of what we've seen. Our special education team, we have two special education academy leads. They are our team chairs, so they hold all of our meetings. In addition to having a caseload and either teaching academic support classes or being co-teachers. Then we have eight special education teachers, three school adjustment slash school social workers, two school psychologists, all they do is test for our reevaluations. They don't provide any support other than that. Four paraprofessionals and we consult with a speech and language pathologist, who's here almost full-time. We're a full inclusion model. So all of our students have their academic classes in, with all of their peers. I did a quick rundown, about 30% of our core academic classes are co-taught. So that's our inclusion model where there's a co-teacher in the classroom or a paraprofessional. And then our individualized support, which is mandated in the IEP for the students. It's academic support classes, so that's with a special education teacher. The ratio is one to eight. He can go up to 12 students if we have another teacher or a paraprofessional in the room, but it's a real low ratio. Individual counseling, individual speech and language and individual or group social pragmatic work. There are other related services that we would support, but we haven't needed them in years. Occasionally we have someone that needs an OT or a PT and then we'll consult that out, but we haven't seen it in a couple of years. And that is the end of my formal slides, but I'm happy to answer any more specific questions you might have. Jennifer?
Yeah, just a quick question. With that volume of kids that are on IEPs or have sped support, is there, I'm assuming there is for the regular teaching population, some sort of teaching how to handle these kids in their classrooms, in their shops? Is that part of their continuing ed as well?
There are, for the vocational students, they have to take a special education class. Same thing for regular ed teachers for part of their renewal for their licensure.
Okay. There's support for them for how to handle these kids as well, to support them and be helpful.
Yeah, the beginning of this school year, we did a lot of PD on anxiety and depression and we continue to make that kind of a priority with our PD.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
So first, that was a really, really good, quick overview, okay? It's a lot of information, a few slides. I hope you'll send us a copy of that presentation so we can have it. And I just know that what they did this year in Newton for the anxiety of some of the students is that they're, the, there's a dog in with a nurse now. So the students can come in for a quick petting session if they want to on the anxiety issue of it. It works for me too, by the way, when I walk by.
I'm happy to get a puppy and bring them to work every day. Well, with our new animal science major, so maybe.
Yeah. So, so Amy, I really appreciate this presentation. I had asked Ed to put it on the agenda because, you know, as one of the public schools with the largest percentage of students on IEPs, I thought it was important that we understand, you know, the types of services, the, you know, and what you're seeing. So I really appreciate this. Have you, has there been any increased need given kind of the, you know, last year with COVID and remote teaching in terms of needing to adjust to IEPs or add services?
The referrals for mental health have gone through the roof. Past guidance, just, you know, at every IEP meeting, it's discussed. Sometimes it's severe enough that it's put on the grid. Obviously, like I said, people coming out of the hospital, going into the hospital. Not every student was on an IEP, but coming out, there's been requests for, you know, initial evaluations, which, you know, at the high school level, we don't get a lot of initials, but we've seen more this year than we have before. And then students who might be on an IEP for ADHD or, or a math disability and now they also have an additional second disability for emotional. So that's where we're seeing it, is the social emotional support.
Any other questions for Amy?
Okay, well, thank you very much. Really appreciate this.
Thanks, Amy. The last item on my agenda has to do with a draft letter that Alice crafted in regards to remote meetings. I haven't had a chance to talk to Alice, but one of the things I did find out from about six or seven other regional school districts was that, I think as you learned, if we want to continue to remote, have the remote option, we need to look at our remote meeting policy. And I have no idea what policies are going to be approved or not, but that seems to be the way a lot of regional schools are approaching this. In other words, making a policy where people can participate remotely. I know Essex Aggie is doing that. I think Franklin County Technical School is doing it. You know, they have 12 to 22 members on their school committee, so.
Alice?
So I used to be opposed to remote participation years ago. There wasn't the technology, there wasn't the technology to do it. And I had a list of 13 reasons why it wouldn't work and all this stuff. But now that we know that it, it is effective and so on, and, and we have greater participation from, from the public and also from people who don't have to drive 40 minutes for a 15-minute meeting. You know, I, I think it's, we see more of the staff. We see a lot more people in general and it enables people without access to cards and so on to participate. Maybe some younger people with kids don't have to get a babysitter and so on. I think it's worth supporting. And as far as I understand it today, the Senate is going, well, not today, I think Thursday, they're debating a, a bill that will allow it to continue into next April. And I think we should send a letter to the House and Senate and CC all of our legislators saying we support it. Because there are a few people who are saying that the remote participation is making the meetings too long because the public comment periods are too long. And, and more public are coming and they're speaking a lot. And to me, that's just a matter of getting a better control over your meeting through your own policies. It's not legislative, it's something else. So I think we should encourage the legislature to support continuing the remote participation and, and do what Ed said, which is to develop our own language. So that's why I asked to give you this letter as a draft. It has a grammatical error where it should have a semicolon somewhere. Should have a period, not a semicolon.
So, so there are two parts to this. One, let me make sure I have this right. One is, does the school committee support sending a letter to the legislature in favor of of remote, remote meetings since the legislature is currently considering such a bill? So I think that that's one piece. Alice has drafted a letter, which I'm checking now, which is not in our packet, right?
No, it is.
Oh, it is in the packet. I missed it. Can someone tell me what page?
Page 10.
I went right by it.
10 and 11.
So, um, so I think without having to do wordsmithing here, you know, we, I'd like to see if the school committee would support, you know, sending, you know, sending such a letter as what Alice had drafted.
Do you want to vote?
Yeah, I say so will.
I will second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? Jeff?
So allowing continued remote participation as an idea is fine. Just to remind us, when we do create, if this goes through and we do have to create our own policy, the devil will be in the details to come up with a policy that balances all the things that we want. So my primary concern would be that there are things that you lose when you're remote in terms of a group being cohesive. So when we do, if this does go through and we do have to create our own policy, then I want to be very careful when we do that for the reason of encouraging us to be together whenever possible. And of course, also, as Alice mentioned, having a proper policy about public comment so that we're public comments so that we're not overwhelmed by that. So I guess what I'm saying is that there are probably a number of issues that we have not yet anticipated, and the amount of time it will take to construct a, a good policy for us will be extensive. So it's fine, sending the letter is fine, having that option is fine. But I think that it will not be so easy for us to come up with the right policy, and we should be prepared to spend quite a bit of time just debating that when the time comes.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Any other, any other questions or comments on the motion? Michael?
Does anyone know of a school district that is drafting a policy and offering it for other, others to follow or comment or adapt as their own?
So I actually contacted Glenn Kuchar from N A S C to ask him if there were a draft policy, if any other school districts had created a policy. He did not have anything. He said they were working with this legislature on this, and so I don't have anything. But I think if there were one, Glenn would know about it. So the answer is probably no.
I agree with Jeff. There'll be work to do to craft a policy that works for us. But I think it offers a great advantage, given our geographical challenges to, to foster, you know, very good and valuable, valuable participation.
Okay, any, any other comments? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote. It's on, the vote is on the motion to send the letters drafted to the legislature and legislators in favor of remote participation.
Did anybody have any edits to it? I just was curious because Alice mentioned a radical one, but. No?
Judy?
I just want to say thank you, Alice, for taking the time and using your expertise to get this done. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks to the MMA for writing a letter ahead of us.
Okay, so with that, are we ready to move to a vote? Okay, Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spolinger Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
I was still looking, so yes, thank you.
Okay, and thank you very much, Alice. We appreciate you drafting this.
You're welcome.
Okay. And as both, well, as Alice and Jeff and Michael have said, once this goes through, if it goes through, you know, that, you know, we will have, you know, we will have work to do on crafting a very thoughtful policy.
Already started.
I would have expected nothing less. Thank you. Okay, anything else from, for the superintendent's report? No, okay, let's move on to principal's report. George?
So we want to just mention that we graduated 138 students last Friday at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. We had a great team put together the ceremony and between Diane Dempsey and Brian Tilslie really showing all their experience corralling the kids, organizing the event. And then all the players that just make it special, like, like a Sarah Ard who did all the flowers on the stage. I don't know if you noticed, but they were just tremendous. Erin Bordeaux and Joe Jock is for getting our scholarships and awards in order and just the amount of participation. We had over 20 volunteers from every level, from administrative assistants, you know, and that's not counting the administration that came, obviously, and it helped us. We had a really good Minuteman presence there as well. Each person, each graduate was able to bring about six guests on average from count, which was nice, you know, everybody got to have their first real event, I think, post COVID. The seniors, you know, they went out with a lot of class. They had, you know, it was a challenging ending. I mean, even their last two weeks, we got the waiver on a Friday and on Monday, we had, as a result of that, we had to cut three days out of the seniors' experience and reshuffle the schedule and the calendar for them and the entire world. But, you know, they handled it all very, very gracefully. We had the gala. We had the drive-in movie theater event at school, which was nice for kids. We had some specialty themed lunches. We had banners with their pictures displayed. Erin really did, Erin Bordeaux really did a nice job as their class advisor, making sure that they had as good of a send off as we possibly could, could do for them. So say goodbye to the class of 2021. I'll always feel a certain regret that we didn't get to spend more time with them because they really were just such awesome kids. I don't know, we can't get that back, but at least I feel like they went off on a, on a good foot on Friday. So here's my graduation report.
Thank you, George. Any questions? Jeff?
George, this is a tiny bit premature. But the year is practically over. You have your regrets, but I'm sure that they're very, very grateful for you were able to accomplish. And to you and all the administrators and the staff, great job in getting us through this, this year, in which every hour of every day was another new battle. So I know how that feels like, believe me. So congratulations to you and everybody you've been working with on doing this.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Yes. Much congratulations from the school committee.
Thank you.
Can we ask Katie to give us an update on summer school, just to kind of another broad brush as to what we're planning?
Are you here, Katie? She texted me a minute, a few minutes ago, saying she was having a childcare emergency.
Oh.
I think putting kids to bed or whatever was going on. If not, I could give a broad brush.
Go ahead. I'll try to fill in the blanks and Amy will.
Okay, so.
Anthony will.
Broad brush, we're, we're looking to kick off our programming July, July 12th. We'll have four weeks of summer school. Enrollment into these courses is really going to begin in earnest on Friday, once grades close, because most of the academic end of what we're offering is credit recovery based, and we'll have a better idea of who, who needs to make up what. But we've, we basically have the programming ready. One of the new designs that we have this year, you know, as we met as a team, and I think it was Amy actually came up with the, with the idea. Yeah, it was Amy. We're going to keep these courses running. It's one week. So traditionally, you'd come for four weeks, a couple hours to do your English class and you'd fill it in that way. We're going to kind of do it a full immersion, one, one solid, one solid week, eight to three, get it all done, you know, get your credit back, and we're hoping that that will entice more kids to come. You know, because they know they can see a definitive beginning and an end and kind of get it over with. It's been a little challenging, to be honest. Getting faculty to work, we've had some, you know, we had some people say initially they would do it and then they backed off. I think it's just a sign of it's educator burnout, you know, and I get it. If you're, if you need the time, then we need them to take the time to come back stronger in the fall. But we were able to fill it up with, with Minuteman personnel. So you know, we feel good about that because it's always the best foot forward for our kids. We are going to have one whole week, a class dedicated to really social emotional type of programming for kids if they're interested. We have a program designed for incoming students to kind of get them oriented and get them a little taste of the school. You know, do a little bit of career exploration, meet some people, get some tours, so they'll get a little bit of a, of a jump on the beginning of the year. So, you know, we'll see how it goes. It's a, it's a new model for us. We're doing some new things. Experimentation is good, innovation is good. And we'll see how it goes. So it's a broad brush of the summer of what we got. Again, we're CTE courses are involved in that too, and there you go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the committee that we have about $55,000 in grant funds, $45,000 in a new grant, and then $10,000 left over from a previous grant that we can apply towards summer school. We're anticipating some other resources. Don't have them in our pocket yet, but we're still moving forward.
Any questions on the summer program? Okay. I'm assuming that enrollment would be much higher than in a typical summer this year. Is that your expectation?
We'll, we'll see, you know, I, one of the things we are going to do is we're going to allow kids to take up to three courses if, if, if needed, you know, to boost up, to get their credit back, which is something we haven't done before. So we'll see if that, if that has a way of inflating the numbers. But I'm, I'm curious to see when we really, you know, kids obviously know what they need to do in order to, you know, pass for the year or what their situation is. But just like we, we've kind of had a little rough time, you know, nailing down our teachers, I wonder if it's going to be the same for kids who are going to say, you know what, I could make it up this summer. I'll wait till next summer. You know, I'm, I'm cooked. You know, I just want to have a good summer, relax, that kind of thing. So we'll really see. I'm not, not so sure.
Okay, anything else, George?
No, I think that's it for, for my report.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Moving on to subcommittee reports, policy, Alice. Alice, if you're talking, I can't see you're on mute.
I was talking and also on mute. Thank you. So Amy has been working with us, Judy and I, on a naming policy Ed had requested. We get that back onto the front burner and he's made some comments on it. Amy and I are going to talk that over tomorrow. We are also getting Section B retooled by the attorneys. I don't know if you all recall Section B, but it's what contains the regional agreement, the bylaws, all of the things that have to kind of mesh together and be consistent that are really important documents of the school committee, but your eyes are all blazing over it. So you understand immediately that the problem with this section is that nobody's interested in it, but it is almost our most important section. So the attorneys are cleaning it up and they're going to bring it back and it'll work for us. We'll review it, but, but they're doing the heavy lifting on that section. Because we've, we haven't managed to get it done since 2016, when the regional agreement was modified. And it has to be done, and it's going to be a tedious meeting when it comes back, just warning you ahead of time. But, but we have to do it. So that's kind of the two things that are right on the top of the, of the pile right at this moment. That's it.
Jeff?
Just one comment on Section B. The thing is, is that it's the sort of stuff that when everything runs smoothly, you don't need it all. It's only when something goes a little bit wrong and you can't be so informal anymore, and you have to look at the legal language and all the policies that you have under you that you really, really need it to be accurate.
Right.
So that's the thing, that's why it's kind of on one hand, it's yes, 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 of course, that's how it works, and we know that. But really, the, the stuff has to be 100% accurate underneath for when something goes a little bit untoward. So it's very important that we manage to do this without our, our eyes glazing over.
And we're not attorneys, so it's great to have an attorney do it.
Yes, okay. Well, thank you very much. You know, and thank you to the very hardworking policy subcommittee. Strategic planning update, Ford.
Thanks, Pam. Strategic planning subcommittee is currently with Pam and Alice and Kevin Mahoney has been helping us, which we're grateful for. The request for proposals for superintendent search firm was recently posted and sent to some appropriate candidates. The due date for responses is June 22. On June 23, the strategic planning committee will meet to review the submissions and rank them in accordance to their meeting, the criteria for scope of services. Finalists will be selected by, by those rankings, and on June 28, strategic planning committee will interview the finalists and vote to make a recommendation to the school committee. We'll bring that to the school committee on June 29 with our recommendation for a search firm. With that, we'll be kicking off our process, our summer process, which hopefully will include the appointment of a Minuteman Superintendent Search Committee, which we would like to do over the summer. Finalize the superintendent profile, criteria for success, which is really based on the work that we did in the last two retreats. And finalize, finalization of an invitation to apply a document that prescribes the position, the district, Minuteman, mission statement, qualifications, timeline, process, et cetera. So I think that's what we hope to do over the summer. That may require, as Pam nails, an additional meeting or two of the school committee, but we shall see how the progress goes. And that way, we'll be ready by September to kick off our process. That's it.
Any questions for Ford? Okay, let's move on to finance.
Yes, thank you, Pam. We are, we'll be meeting as a finance committee on the June 22nd, primarily to get estimates about end of the year surpluses in, in the district budget and formulate a recommendation for the school committee on June 29 as to end of year transfers, potentially transferring some money into stabilization. And I've asked staff also look at the potential for transferring money into, into the OPEB trust, if that's possible, with end of, end of the year funds. So we did not meet in, last week because we want the staff to scrub the numbers and we'll be meeting on June 22. So the 29th will be kind of a big meeting as to how we want to look at some of our end of the year finances and what transfers we may want to consider. That's it.
Okay, any, any questions for Steve? Ed, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I'm just reminding you, we have a great opportunity to move forward with our capacity building projects, I believe. We'll see what the numbers look like next week.
Okay, we'll be hearing a lot more on the 29th. Communications, access and admissions, Jeff?
Quite a mouthful, isn't it?
It is.
I believe that we're going to have a review of the admissions process by Anthony, is that correct?
Well, I can get, let me give you an update and then see where we go from there. As I emailed a few of you, the at the last meeting, I don't know if it was the officers meeting or the CAA or the school committee, I was asked to talk with my administrators about what would be the impact of increasing the freshman class as a result of offering all the students who are on the waiting list from in district communities admissions. And so we did that. We had a discussion and we saw three or four impacts and we felt that we could accommodate those impacts. And I can, I'll go into more detail about them at a, probably another meeting, but last Friday before graduation, Anthony. last Friday before graduation, Anthony offered all the students from in district communities on the waitlist admissions. And we have not heard from all of them yet. But we are anticipating a freshman class of perhaps 210. And that's what we're going to try to plan for. So as as we expected, the students that we had offered admissions to from in district and out of district, you know, changed their minds over the last few weeks, and there'll probably be some of that between now and the end of August when we begin school, but we did a lot of hard work about what we would need to do to accommodate really 60 students more than what our design enrollment is 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 around, which we've been doing more, you know. So we're expecting a class of close to 690, perhaps 700 students next year. So in order to accommodate that, what we felt was necessary, and some of this is budgeted, it's not additional expense, but was adding more technical assistance in the vocational technical areas. Looking at the schedule, probably changing the schedule because, look, what what has Minuteman known for? And why are we so successful? It's because of the relationships that kids have with their teachers. And why are those relationships so strong? It's because we have small class sizes. Those class sizes are growing, but what can we do to maintain smaller class sizes as well as accommodate the large percentage of special ed students and their IEP requirements? So we're looking at changing the schedule to keep classes sizes reasonable for a Minuteman perspective and from our student body perspective. We're looking at teaching more classes. We're also looking in the long term. You know, why don't we look at our graduation requirements? Because when you look at that, it is driving some of our schedule quite a bit. So let's take a look at all those things to see if we can accommodate a larger class this coming fall.
Michael?
Sorry, getting off mute there. Ed, this is very welcome news. I received your email with some of those details already. You know, I just want to express my thanks to to you and your administration for working through the ramifications to Jeff and the other members of the communications access and admissions committee for allowing me to to drop in on their most recent meeting. To all of you, my colleagues, I think you understood that this was a important, serious and vital issue for for quite a few people. And I am very happy to to learn of the outcome, where we are today and what we'll be working on and going forward. So Ed, again, my thanks.
Thank you for keeping it on my front burner.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm going to, I have a, I have a comment on this. The comment is, obviously, we cannot admit as many students who want to apply going forward. There will be limits and there is a financial impact on all of this. Now, what we did this year was we took a, I would say a fairly courageous stand in which unilaterally, going back a few months, we decided to increase the class size before this particular incident occurred to about 200 students, meaning a school size of 800 students, right? And that's going to require a lot of things to go right in the future in order for that to be realized and for this not to be just one year of a larger class. And there are going to be a lot of complications coming up in doing that. There are probably going to be complications that can be solved at a school level. There may be complications in which our member towns have to be involved. And there could be dollars involved in this. I mean, you can't just magically increase the size of schools, no dollars, and that dollars have to come with somewhere. And one of the plans is that we we think with the very clever and well thought out plan that Ed gave us a draft of earlier, we think that we're going to do that all internally. And that may work out, but there's no guarantees. So although we may be happy to have this large class here this year, there's no guarantee that that's going to be the new normal, even at 200 or 190. And when we want to work to that goal, it's going to be complicated and we're going to need a lot of cooperation. And I hope that we're going to have that cooperation from the member towns. And there's one, one more point I wanted to make on this. Well, the other issue is there is a monetary issue here involved in other questions regarding this issue. One of it, which is do we want another member town or not? And that's something we really have to have a conversation about. And that's a conversation that we may also want to get some input from our member town because it's going to have a big impact on them. Having another member town will have a big impact on the cost per student and also the number of students that we can send from the current towns. And this and other issues are things that we're going to have to discuss moving forward, which is further complicated by the fact that to some extent this is a moving target because of what the state is doing. So we're going to have a lot of conversations on these, and there's, there's just no guarantee that we can have a class size this big moving forward. Unless we all work hard, we got cooperation from the member towns, which may require money in one form or another. But it is a goal that I think that is worth the effort and worth pursuing to allow more of the kids in the district to be able to attend this school. I just wanted to say that is kind of the cap of this issue that's been going on for a number of months.
Yeah, I agree. You know, the next few CAA meetings are going to be important. And so we're managing our success.
We.
What a, what a great way to put it. I'm going to steal that and use that later, if you don't mind.
Yes, I want you all to be saying that as we go to the next round of budget hearings for FY '23.
Well, and and I guess, and I also want to add my thanks to Ed and Anthony and the administration, who everyone, everyone who worked on this for, you know, coming up with a solution to, you know, to be able to admit those students, knowing that, as Jeff was saying, we can't just do that every year. But I think, you know, we did have, you know, as we go along, we also learn kind of, well, how do we need to be managing the process and managing it with our towns? And, you know, kind of, you know, you know, so that you know, some of the issues that came up this year, you know, we can, you know, maybe better be on top of in future years. Other, other comments or questions? Anything else on CAA?
I think that's enough.
Well, do we have the breakdown in terms of, well, I guess we don't have all the I mean, we're still waiting to hear from students. I was going to say.
We'll let you know on the 29th. We'll let you know on the 29th with the numbers. Like, they change every day.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, then Superintendent Negotiations and Evaluation Subcommittee, Jennifer.
All right, so I've dropped the ball on the evaluation. The good news is it's not due to the state until the 31st of July, so Dan and Mary Ann are working on the executive summary for us, and I'm hoping that by the 29th, I'll have a survey ready for everybody. Once that's done, we should be able to move forward fairly quickly. The good news is because we already renegotiated Ed's one-year extension, there's no need to vote on any kind of salary increase or anything that would be required by the end of the fiscal year. So we're, we're in pretty good shape. I'm waiting for the for the summary before we move forward.
Okay, any questions for Jennifer? Then let's move to the secretary's report.
I received no comments. I will comment myself that it was a bit like reading Dr. Johnson's dictionary writing those minutes. So I fully appreciate anyone who is is concise in a conversation.
With that, do we have a motion to approve the draft minutes of May 11?
Some moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spoling Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockard Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes. I mean, I just commented how good we're doing the alphabetical thing today. I'm very proud of everybody.
Totally unnecessary. Alice DeLucas Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you. And now we get to practice the alphabet one more time.
I'm moving adjourned.
A second.
Second.
Okay, let's do it again. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
The pressure was on me because Dave is not here. So Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Good job, Steve.
Ford Spoling Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
That's why you can't leave, Jennifer, because I need my spot, too.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice DeLucas Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And you know, we will see you all on the 29th. Have a good couple of weeks. Have a good end of the school year for all of those who are involved in some way with the end of the school.
Thank you.
Take care.